Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosemary Hagiwaara, pronouns she/her, and I'm the Chief Election Officer for the upcoming election in the city of Vancouver. The 2022 Vancouver election is taking place on the traditional ancestral and shared territories of the Hunkam Minam Squamish-speaking people, including Muskwim and Squamish Nation and the Salute Nation. These nations have steward the land and park immemorial. This session is being recorded and will be available at vancouver.ca/vote after this event. We intend to keep our attendees anonymous. We will not mention of those asking a question. Only the organizers will see it. You may view a more accurate transcription through the stream text link, which is now in the chat, or you can also find it from the email we sent out today. You also have registered American Sign Language interpreters for the session tonight. There's no need to worry about being on mute as we have deactivated this function. If you have a question for the panelists tonight, we will address them at the end of the presentation. Please click on this icon, Q&amp;A icon on your screen and leave your question. If you have technical questions, questions for our organizers, please use the chat button. The chat button will otherwise be activated for communicating with others to minimize disruptions. You may also use the closed captioning feature. Tonight, we will give you a high-level overview of some areas of the service groups within the city, followed by a presentation from the Park Board Office and the School Board Office. I will then touch on the authority of the Vancouver Charter and Bylaws. As mentioned previously, you will have an opportunity to submit questions throughout the presentation, and we will answer them at the end. I also wanted to let you know that some of our presenters tonight will need to attend council meeting at six o'clock, so they may not be available to answer questions. If this is the case, we will take your questions and get them answered for you after the session tonight. Today, we are joined by some of our general managers, who will give you some insight on their department's responsibilities and things for you to keep in mind about each unique department. Our first presenter is Theresa O'Donnell, pronouns she/her, and she's the General Manager for Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability. Theresa, thank you for joining us tonight. Over to you.
Thank you, Rosemary, and welcome, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. As Rosemary said, I am Theresa O'Donnell, and I'm the General Manager for Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability. So what does that mean? What do we do at PDS? Well, we are the... We work with a lot of the departments, and you'll hear from some of those tonight, engineering and ACCS and a number of other folks. But we help develop and implement the council's vision and direction through the creation of plans, policies, bylaws, and other things that guide the physical and economic development of the city. And I'll explain a little bit more about that later, but like tonight, the council is considering the Broadway Plan. Sure, the Planning Department really led a multidisciplinary effort with ACCS and engineering and DBL to create that plan and bring it to council today. There's really two main functions, two main sections in the Planning Department. That's the long-range planners, the folks that work to develop these plans, and then the current planning staff. And what they do is they work on the rezoning cases, development permits, and the more permitting aspects of it. Those are our two main sections. Next slide, please. And we really deliver five key services. The first one is the economic and development, economic planning and development contributions. That, we work in hand-in-hand with our Finance Department to look at CACs and DCLs and how we actually pay for growth. The second one is affordable housing. That one, we work integrally with ACCS to look at a range of housing needs, and most affordable housing, from homeless all the way to affordable and low-income housing, and of course, market rental housing, market-rate housing. The third one is sustainability, so the Climate Action Plan and any of those types of plans or policies that concern sustainability. The fourth one is citywide and community planning. So those are like the Broadway Plan. It's a specific area of the city, whether it's neighborhood or a business corridor or planning around transit stations. We develop those kind of plans. And then again, the current planning and the policy regulations. So again, it's the zoning and development bylaws. So when you drive or walk down the street and you see those big blue signs that talk about development permits, we surface that function too. Also, all the zoning cases that go to City Council. Okay, next slide, please. Our priorities for this year are getting the Vancouver Plan passed. It'll be a citywide plan. It will come to council in June. The Broadway Plan, which is under consideration right now. The delivery of affordable housing units that we've been, again, working in hand-in-hand with ACCS on to get as many of those affordable housing projects started and underway as possible. The preservation and creation of job space to make sure that we have good jobs for a range of incomes in the city. Also, the Climate Emergency Plan, the Jericho Land Policy, and our improvements for processing permits. Okay, next slide. So I think the most important thing for candidates and office holders to remember about PDS is good government, good direction, good policy development from the City Council will lead to good planning. And then we can develop those plans that we have, can publish and make available for the public, so people understand what's happening in their community. And that leads to good projects. So when you see development around the Canby Corridor or up and down Broadway, or maybe closer to your neighborhood, you'll be able to rely on good, solid planning, land use planning advice from the Planning Department in order to make those projects a reality. So with that, I think those are all my comments today. Thanks for your time. And I will be required to be in council members at six o'clock, but I'll try to be back in order to get any questions that you might have. So, thank you, Rosemary. Back over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Theresa, for your presentation. The next GM to present is Lon Leclair, pronouns he/him. He's the General Manager of Engineering Services. Lon, over to you. Thank you.
Yes, hello, everyone. Yes, Lon Leclair, General Manager of Engineering Services. And we're a very large department in the city of Vancouver. If you think about geographically how the city is divided up, Theresa, who you just heard from, looks after the buildings and the private land. Park, you'll hear from Donnie Rosa, parks look after parks. And the streets are really the responsibility of the Engineering Department. So there's about $22 billion worth of assets. And that includes the streets themselves and everything that's on them. It also includes managing transportation and the uses on the street as well, which includes patios and street furniture, Mobi and stuff like that. Engineering is also responsible for managing, designing, building, and operating the water system, the sewer system, and the drainage system. And finally, we look after sanitation. And so this is street cleanliness. And the city also manages the Vancouver landfill, which is located in Delta. Next slide. In terms of the values, the Engineering Department has predominantly been, I guess, a male-dominated department in many respects, which is why we're working so hard on our diversity and inclusivity programs. When we have new staff come to our department, we want them to feel welcome. We're also working, I would say, if you want to think of my general approach to managing the department, I would say I focus on transparency and collaboration. And that's because we have to work with so many other departments and other agencies. And we're always looking for a continuous improvement and innovation. Just to mention, the external partners that we work closely with, and it's also worth knowing this, is Metro Vancouver, up there, number one. They manage the source waters for our water system. It's the watersheds and the reservoirs, and that water feeds into our water system. And then they also manage the sewer trunks and the sewage treatment plants. So our sewer system flows into their system. So that's why we need to work closely with them. Translink, Translink is the operator of the transit system. They work closely with us in terms of transit services in the city of Vancouver. They also support us on major improvements to the major road network, the bike network, and more recently, walking network as it pertains to access to transit. We also work closely with the province. Most notably, right now, is the work that we're doing on the Broadway subway. The province is building that. And of course, we're working in close collaboration with that. We work closely with the First Nations, Muskwim, Squamish, Shen, Swetlathuth. A big piece of work that we just concluded was the services agreement for the Senoc development at the south end of the Broad Bridge. And Vancouver being the biggest port in the country, Port of Vancouver, and the railways are also important partners for us. Next slide. The priorities for this department. If you can imagine, with these incredible amount of infrastructure network across the city, both in pipes and roads, is to maintain and renew that infrastructure. So we're doing that pretty much every day. We're doing repairs and maintenance on our system. We also have to support growth. We see increased demand as a result of densification across the city, and so that means more needs in terms of services. Increasing resiliency is a really high on a priority for our department, largely because of our need to adopt to climate change and emergencies. And so last year is a really good example of that, where we had extreme weather events like the Heat Dome, like the atmospheric river with rainfall intensity, but also with severe storms with high winds and snow and ice. And so we're having to adapt our systems to accommodate those new demands that we had not previously planned for, and including sea level rise. And to do that, sometimes it requires the transformation of our service delivery, and so that's the other priority for our department. Next slide. So if I could leave you with three thoughts to keep in mind for the Engineering Department. The first one is what we call the infrastructure deficit. And it's a phenomenon that's not unique to Vancouver. It's unique to, or it's similar to many cities of our age. And that is when you have a lot of your system, in particular, the water pipes and the sewer pipes, that were built at a certain time, and these pipes are designed to last 100 years. They all start to approach end of life approximately at the same time. So the coming decades, it will be a lot of work on the Engineering Department to replace a lot of the system which is coming, is at the end of its life. The end, the additional demands. So I mentioned growth and demographic changes and the impacts of climate change. So those put new demands on our system that we need to respond to. And finally, I'll just mention increased demands for level of service. And you might hear this from a number of residents and businesses, is that they're often looking for a higher level of service. For example, in terms of street cleanliness, you know, replacing burnt-out light bulbs, fixing sidewalks that are in a bad state of repair. And so we do have a lot of pressure from that. In fact, our department receives about 370 requests for services every day. And with that, I'll pass it back to Rosemary. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Lon, for your presentation. Our next presenter is Andrea Law, pronouns she/her, and is the General Manager of Development, Buildings and Licensing. Andrea?
Rosemary, I feel very privileged to be here today, so thanks for the introduction. So a little bit about development, buildings and licensing. We're responsible for a number of key services in the city of Vancouver, including permitting on private property, land and airspace parcel subdivisions, bylaw enforcement and compliance through inspections and field services. We also oversee animal services, which includes sheltering and licensing. We administer the license bylaw and community standards through compliance and enforcement. Finally, we create policy and regulations that enable us to operate within our regulatory framework. Next slide, please. So over the past few years, DBL has transitioned many aspects of our business model, including a shift from an in-person system to a technology-enabled service. We continue to explore opportunities to enhance our support for businesses and the community with continuity of essential permitting and licensing services with a technology-focused delivery model. We are also in the process of implementing a multi-year technology plan to enable increased online services and opportunities for self-serve auctions. We also have ongoing permit improvement projects and initiatives aimed at reducing complexity, improving service levels, and creating greater efficiencies in the city's permit processes. Next slide, please. So while DBL creates regulations and associated policy, we also help to inform key policies that shape development throughout the city with an emphasis on life safety, resiliency, and an accessible built environment. One of our goals is to ensure businesses can operate effectively and efficiently in neighborhoods across the city. We have also been working closely with businesses to support emerging business models, many of these coming out of the pandemic. Next slide, please. So DBL is a fee-funded, 100% user-fee-funded department with a staff complement of roughly 350. We oversee the review and issuance, as I've noted, and compliance of regulations through the end-to-end development lifecycle. Leading up to 2020, DBL operated the largest public-facing counter in the city. We shifted quickly to an online process in response to the pandemic and continue to evolve our customer services, applying a digital-first model. While our services center is once again open and our walk-in traffic coming back through the doors, we have seen a significant decrease as customers choose and are able to make general inquiries and submit permit and license applications through our digital channels. Next slide, please. Within DBL, we have two key roles, including the Chief Building Official as well as the Chief License Inspector. Both of these roles have delegated authority from City Council to oversee key standards and bylaws throughout the city. The department works closely with other city departments and external partners to develop policies and deliver key services. These two roles often work closely to advance key council initiatives as well. Some of these include short-term rentals, relief and rehabilitation of aggressive dogs, the summer patio program, the standards of maintenance bylaw, and the noise control bylaw, just to give you some examples. Next slide, please. Finally, achieving our service objectives often involves input or actions from other levels of government, community and industry partners, local business, and other agencies, as well as internal city teams across the organization. One of the key service initiatives underway in DBL is our ePlan project. We are in the final phase of implementing electronic plan review for all of our permit types with building permits underway and expected to complete in 2022. That's all I have for you today. I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Andrea, for your presentation. The next presenter is Sandra Singh, pronouns she/her. She's the General Manager for Arts, Culture and Community Services. Sandra, over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Pleasure to be with you. I'm sorry that the printing on this slide is so small, but I trust you'll get copies of them and can take a look at the deck later at your leisure. So Arts, Culture and Community Services, like a number of the departments that you've met tonight, is a mix of policy work and direct public service delivery. And so what I've done here is outlined the major areas of our work in the city and our work for council. So on the left-hand side column, you'll see the work of two of our departments related to, in the area of housing services. So ACCS works in the area of general social and cultural development, and that includes everything from social policy, cultural services, to affordable housing delivery in partnership with Theresa and PDS. And so on that far-left side, we have two departments, non-market housing, delivery and operations, as well as housing and homelessness services. And so in terms of non-market housing, delivery and operations, our focus is to develop affordable housing through utilizing city land or other assets. And so we're the delivery arm of affordable housing. We also operate just over 1,000 units of low-income housing in the city. And that work is done in partnership with senior government and community organizations. The Housing and Homelessness Services team work on supportive housing strategy, including policy and work around, and strategy work around SRO hotels. They provide housing support services, for example, the renter office and homelessness outreach. And they work with senior government to deliver emergency homelessness shelters and to activate our extreme weather response for people experiencing homelessness. We do also offer, through ACCS, we operate social operations and community centers in the downtown and in the downtown east side. So the Evelyn Saller Center, the Gathering Place, and the Carnegie Community Center, and the programming at Oppenheimer Park are offered through our social operations team. And we offer low-cost meals, health and hygiene services, such as laundry and shower services, as well as fee-free and low-barrier recreational, social and cultural programs. And we also do community outreach and referral to other community partners. And within the social operations, we also operate Mountain View Cemetery, which is, of course, the place where in Vancouver we inter and commemorate our loved ones and deceased residents. And through that mountain view, we also provide a range of cultural and community events. Moving into our departments that do a bit of the, some of the policy work now as well, social policy and projects really works in any area related to the social determinants of health. So from urban health matters, such as the overdose crisis and mental health and substance use, to equity-oriented policies, such as taking a look at approaches to anti-racism in the community or other types of social policies. We also work in partnership with Planning Department to deliver social infrastructure. So that's everything from childcare to neighborhood houses, spaces that support social development and community connection in the community, as well as our food policy and systems work. We undertake the operator selection for any of the city-owned social services spaces. So in addition to working with PDS to deliver those, and we also run the city's grant program to social service organizations. So we grant about $10 million a year as the city into the social services community. And we also work very closely with urban indigenous community partners, as well as we work in the area of low-barrier community economic development and labor market attachment. In cultural services, it's kind of a sister or sibling department to social policy, but for a cultural sector and the arts. That department delivers long-range culture and arts policy. They deliver public art and manage the public art collection of the city. They work in partnership with Planning to deliver cultural infrastructures, such as artist studios or artist housing, theaters and other spaces that we activate with arts and culture. They do the operator selection for city-owned cultural spaces, as well as run the culture and arts granting. And out of this portfolio, we grant about $13 million a year to arts and culture organizations across the city. And part of the work of this department is also, even though most of our, all of our granting happens to nonprofits, we also partner with the music industry to deliver the music strategy. And then as well, on the culture side, we operate the four civic theaters, the Orpheum, Queen Elizabeth Theater, Annex and Vancouver Playhouse. And we also manage all of the nonprofit leases that the city has with housing providers, cultural operators and social operators. So that's the kind of the day-to-day work of ACCS. On the next slide, you will see the priorities in our 2022 work plan. We organize them based on council's priorities. So these are the priorities that our current council have identified for us. And so I won't go through detail here, but there is a range of work that we undertake at the direction of council. Either it's come through council-approved long-range strategies, such as the Healthy City Strategy or Culture Shift or Housing Vancouver, or it may come through council, through budget approval, annual budget approvals, or through motions or other directions. So we do work at the direction of council, and we build our work plan based on implementing those strategies and directions. I don't have a slide on what to keep in mind for ACCS, but what I would say are three things. One is that the work of ACCS happens in partnership with other organizations and departments. So we really rely on partnerships with community partners and service organizations, nonprofits, other city departments. We work so closely with Planning, with PDS, with DBL, with parks. There goes on. There's not one city department that we don't partner with in ACCS to deliver this work. Public partners, such as Vancouver Coastal Health or VPD, and the School Board, we work closely with them, as well as senior government, the province, CMHC, BC Housing. And so we really do rely on those partnerships to do our work. What that also means, though, is that sometimes, because this is very complex work, sometimes it takes us a little bit longer to deliver than folks might hope. But again, it's because we are working together with others. As I mentioned, the second thing I would highlight is that we work at the direction of council, whether it's implementing a previously approved strategic or public policy that a council had approved or in response to emerging priorities. And the third piece I would just flag is that in the work that we do in ACCS, as you can see from the list I provided, much of it is very complex work, and it's very, often very challenging work. And staff work really hard to understand and balance the many community perspectives that they hear as they are out in the community doing work. It's very rewarding, and it can be also very challenging. And they work really hard to meet council expectations and to fulfill council direction and just want to do that shout-out for our staff, who really are the, are bringing these services to life for council and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra, for the presentation. Our next presenter is Donnie Rosa, who is the General Manager of Parks and Recreation, and will now speak to the role of... and will now speak to the role of Park Board. Thank you, Donnie, for joining us tonight.
My absolute pleasure to be here. You know, I'm listening to my counterparts with my teammates. You know, like Teresa in planning, the park board plays a role in city building. Like Lon in engineering, we face an infrastructure deficit. Like Andrea in DBL, we do our work to build resiliency in the community. And like my friend in ACCS, Sandra, we rely on partnerships as well to deliver our services. And it's really important to note that the work that we do, we rely on each one of the city departments, as much as they rely on us to deliver services and to do it in a way that we are considering the whole city within our specific areas. So in Parks and Recreation, we are responsible for over 240 parks. As you know, they are well-loved and they are hard-working, meaning they are well-used. Through the pandemic, we realized quickly just how busy our parks and open spaces were going to be, and it hasn't slowed up. We also operate 11 beaches and many beautiful acres of green spaces throughout the city. We also deliver recreation services, and we do this in partnership with our ever-evolving and most recently very successful partnership with our community center associations. We have worked hard to build a healthy relationship with our community center associations, and we value how they work with us and what they deliver to the community. We have 23 community centers in total. We also deliver 12 pools, eight rinks, 15 fitness centers, six golf courses, which by the way serviced 200,000 rounds in this past year, and I'll speak a little more to that later. We offer the pitch and putts across the city, two marinas, 300 sport fields, the urban forest, which is 600,000 inventoried trees and growing, trails, community gardens and so much more. Many of you will know that of course we offer destination attractions like Van Dusen, Blodel, Stanley Park, Queen Elizabeth Park. And you're not truly a Vancouverite if you've never been on the Stanley Park train. And we all know how much that's a beloved rite of passage here in Vancouver. We also support special events in parks and we have cultivated numerous community partnerships. We are especially connected to our arts community, the grassroots arts community, the sport community, seniors and environmental groups, to name just a few. Next slide, please. As most of you probably know, the park board is a publicly elected body. It is established by the Vancouver Charter to specifically manage and protect Vancouver's Parks and Recreation Services. So there's basically three main areas. One is to enact the bylaws for control, regulation, protection and government of parks and the activities in those parks. So that's where community centers and sport fields come in and all the other things on parkland. Approve strategic policy and set the vision for the service levels that guide Parks and Recreation Services and programs, and engage with the community, acting as their voice to ensure that Vancouver Parks and Recreation Services remain accessible and sustainable. Next slide, please. So this looks like a lot, but I'll explain it. So as the GM, I report and provide guidance to the elected park board, and I am a member of the city's leadership team, as well as providing advice and guidance to commissioners. I oversee the implementation of strategic direction and policy, which is set by the board. This includes the delivery on a $356 million capital plan, which was the 2019 to 2022 plan. Lead the daily operations. Our operating budget is $143.6 million in expenditures and about $65.5 million in revenues. And you'll note that we're responsible for generating approximately 46% of our budget, of our expenses, which is a fairly aggressive target for us. So we do this with seven collaborative working groups. So we'll start in the top-left appropriately green square circle, and that's our park services. And as you probably know, they're responsible for the maintenance, safety and general cleanliness of our parks. The other large division that we have is the Recreation Services, and that's relationships with our community center associations. They deliver the aquatics, fitness, rinks, as well as outdoor programming, which is a fairly new add to the services there. And they work very closely with the parks folks and with our urban relationships, decolonization and strategic ops. So the reason that this graphic is laid out the way it is is because we actually can't actually operate without each one of these circles working together. Over to the left, the Decolonization Arts and Culture is a fairly new group. This group is responsible for the colonial audit that we are currently doing, one of the first of its kind in Canada that we've heard of. And this colonial audit will help us to develop a decolonizing strategy. We want to decolonize the system at the park board. It will also help us to move forward on our 11 reconciliation strategies that the board has committed to. This group also has the Arts and Culture, public art, monuments, memorials and food gardens, artists and artists-in-residence. You may have heard of our artists-in-residence programs in the fieldhouses, which is again a leading practice in Canada to put artists on the ground and in the community. A fascinating project, and if you have a moment, take a look at the artists-in-residence at Fieldhouse program. To the right, we have the Urban Relationships, also a new area of operation. This group is responsible for working, again, across all the groups in Parks and Recreation to ensure that folks sheltering in our parks are first and foremost safe, that their setting is safe, that they are connected to Sandra Singh's team and the Arts and Culture Community Services Outreach Team, that we're working alongside them to make sure that folks in the park are treated humanely and that we are, as I said, connecting them to services, but also making sure that they have life, safety services at the park while in the park. This group is also responsible for influencing our training using a harm reduction approach, a reconciliation lens, as well as helping us to develop a new model for our park rangers. In the bottom-left, we have Park Planning and Development. And this group is responsible for the capital plans. You'll likely have heard of van play, van splash, people parks and dogs, all of the plans that we've developed. And now implementing those plans and working with our counterparts, with our partners to implement these plans. They're responsible for the design and delivery of playgrounds, like the new Smythe Richards Playground, most recently. They're responsible for environmental stewardship, have relationships with groups like the Stanley Park Ecology Society, SPES, in Stanley Park. They're responsible for the urban food forests and also all of our asset management. We have billions of dollars' worth of assets to manage, and it's a big job. The Strategic Operations and Board Relations Group is they're the group who take on our administrative support. They are taking on our service review, our core service review, to make sure that we're doing things efficiently. I call them the behind-the-scenes group because they're the ones who help us to make informed decisions around how to operate and where to operate and what to be doing. They also are the ones who provide board meetings and council, or sorry, commissioner support and support to the GM office. So this is the group who will be operating and do operate our board meetings, provide any support that commissioners need, any communications back and forth, make sure that commissioners are in the right place at the right time when it comes to public events and making sure that we're responsive to the community. And finally, Business Services. I mentioned earlier that we're responsible for generating about 46% of our overall budget. Well, this couldn't be done without our Business Services Group. They operate golf, the three championship courses, as well as the pitch and putt and many attractions like, as I mentioned, Blodel, the Van Dusen, the beloved Stanley Park train. They also operate the marinas, we have two of them. They operate the food and beverage, parking, they do fundraising, permits for events, and they also oversee the communications and marketing. Next slide, please. Before I go on to this slide, I did want to just give a nod to our relationship with the city. It's a very tight working relationship. We rely heavily on all of the departments that you just heard from. We also rely on financial planning and analysis, human resources, corporate security, IT, sanitation through engineering, real estate and facility management for facility delivery, and as I said, engineering, planning and ACCS, very much so. So I mentioned we have van play. This is the framework that guides us in our work that our board passed in 2020. The overall van play is a combination of four documents. These documents have a 100-year vision, a 25-year outlook and a 10-year outlook. And really, the implementation of the 10-year outlook is what we're working on right now. And these are, I won't go through the vision and mission, but you'll see them very clearly. But I will identify that they are predicated on three basic areas. The delivery of services equitably, and we have a fair and effective parks and recreation system. So making sure that equity-deserving groups have access to the same kinds of services and green spaces as other groups do in the city. Our second one is to weave the city together, making sure that not only our parks and recreation services are connected somehow, but also that we're able to integrate healthy, active living into your everyday life. We want for folks not to have to always make a journey to participate in parks and recreation, but maybe it's on their way home as they're riding their bike or they're walking, and they stop at a park, or they sit on a bench along the way, or they maybe jog through, or they find themselves picking up a game or being in our community center space with their community members. And with that, one of the things that we really work on, like everything else, is making sure that all of our spaces are welcoming for everybody, not just who you would assume they'd be welcoming for, but everybody. And to do that, you really have to understand who doesn't feel welcome or safe or wanting to be there. So we're doing the work to figure that out. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read this, but it gives you a sense of this came from van play, and it basically is our purpose statement, and it is predicated on equity. Next slide, please. So some of our priorities going into 2022. I wish I could say that COVID is done, and it is not. We are still reopening and recovering. We're starting to see people come back to our services. When you look at our parks, you know, they're well over our pre-COVID numbers. When you look at our community centers, they're coming back in different areas at different paces. We are still looking at some services that are online and we are still looking at some services that we're taking out into the community. There's a lot more outdoor programming today than there was pre-COVID, and that's for a number of reasons. COVID and also just issues that face urban parks systems. We are continuing to work on implementing van play. Reconciliation and decolonization remain a top priority for all of us, and the work we're doing in that area is fully supported by all of us and by the board. Equity, access and inclusion remains a priority. Of course, climate change and adaptation. When you see the butterfly highways or you see spaces that we're naturalizing, we're doing that for all of our lungs and all of our future. And we're doing that so that green spaces really truly are filling us with health and protecting our environment and protecting our world. And we're looking at how we do that within our system that already exists, but within our practices as well and future practices. We're looking at new and renewed facilities and assets, and Lon mentioned that there's an infrastructure deficit. Yep, that's what we're facing as well. You have the rest of the list there, and with that, I'll ask for the next slide, please. So all I'll say is that we have some work ahead of us, and thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Donnie, for the comprehensive presentation. Before I introduce our final presenter, I want to remind our attendees that if you have any questions, to please submit them through the Q&amp;A or chat function. Our final presenter tonight is David Green, pronounced he/him, and is the Secretary Treasurer of the Vancouver School Board. Thank you for joining us again, David. Over to you.
Thank you, Rosemary. I'd like to start off by just giving a little bit of an overview. Could you go back one slide, please? Thank you. Before I get into the departmental analysis or departmental framework that we operate with the school board, I wanted to give some basic information. We operate 114 schools, elementary, secondary schools, also some alternate schools. We provide education for 2,500 adults, 1,200 international students and 48,000 of our own students, which include 2,100 indigenous students. I'm just going to mention that, you know, we have 114 schools and obviously the vast majority of our operation relates to the school operations and the education that's provided in those schools. But tonight, I just wanted to give an overview of the School Board Office main departments and how we operate in support of those schools. So next slide, please. So the Superintendent of Schools is the Chief Executive Officer of the district. Currently, her name is Helen McGregor. She is the only employee of the Board of Education, and under the direction of that board, she is the head of the district management team. And as illustrated here, you know, she's responsible for supervision of the requirements of the School Act, the organization administration supervision, evaluation of programs, the general operation of schools and overall supervision and direction of staff. Also provides regular updates to the board at public meetings, and the office of the Secretary Treasurer falls under the superintendent's jurisdiction. So I report to the superintendent, she's the only employee of the board, and everybody else's reports basically up to her through various people in the organization, including myself. Next slide, please. So the Secretary Treasurer's office is responsible for overseeing all the business divisions of the district, and they would include finance, purchasing, administration, facilities and planning. Primary responsibility of the Secretary Treasurer's office through the administration staff that we have is to provide support to trustees, to organize board and committee meetings, and that then involves recording and maintaining the records of the board and standing committee meetings, also maintaining the website, providing business, budget and financial advice as required. My office also oversees the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act and requests that we get from the public for FOI requests. And also, obviously, I'm responsible for fulfilling the duties and requirements of the Secretary Treasurer as outlined in the School Act. Go to the next slide, please. So under the, I mentioned the business division, so under finance, basically finance is responsible. So under the, I mentioned the business division, so under finance, basically finance is responsible for accounting, budgeting, purchasing and administrative services, which include food services, material services and print shop. Primary responsibilities of the finance department are preparing the annual district budget, controlling the collection and disbursement of funds, monitoring revenues and expenditures as compared to the budget, providing accounting guidance to schools, preparing financial reports, including the annual audit and financial statements, and also performing internal audits. So next slide, please. Next slide talks about the facilities department. It's basically composed of three separate departments, maintenance and construction. That department is responsible for building and grounds, maintenance and alteration projects. But they also work hand in hand with building engineers for minor repairs and ongoing routine services in school buildings. The second one is the operations department. It oversees the interior building management and maintenance programs. And it's also responsible for district rentals and leases. That department is responsible, again, also for billing, security, heating, cleaning, indoor air quality, minor repairs and safety inspections. On the planning side, that department is responsible for planning, development and implementation of capital projects. And that would include land acquisitions, construction and development of new schools and major renovations to existing schools. And one of the unique things we have in Vancouver is the Vancouver Project Office, which is a an office that oversees the seismic mitigation program that gets funded from the ministry's seismic mitigation program funds. And we have, you know, several professional engineers down there working in planning and developing projects to be seismically upgraded. Sometimes it's a seismic upgrade, sometimes it's a replacement school. So if you're familiar with any of the areas of the district, like the Begbie Elementary School is a replacement school. The Bayview Elementary School that's nearing completion is also a seismic replacement school. We work collaboratively with the City of Vancouver. Any replacement schools that we get approval for, we work with the City of Vancouver to put a childcare on top of those buildings. And we've been successful in doing that with four or five projects right now. And there's planned projects coming in the future with relation to the Eric Hamber Secondary School project and the Henry Hudson Elementary School project, which is just getting underway. Next slide, please. So under risk management, you know, we are working to implement an enterprise risk management system wide in the school district. We've engaged outside consultants to help us with that, and we're currently in our second go around with that process. Identifying and developing strategies to minimize the risk, the impact of risk, and also developing a center of excellence for managing risk and reducing costs. So what we think about when we look at that, that's by strategically managing risk, you know, we can reduce the chance of loss, create greater financial stability, protect our resources in support of our mission and our strategic plan. Next slide, please. Next slide talks about privacy compliance. And I mentioned that earlier, we're basically, you know, we're responsible for developing and implementation of a privacy management program, the accepting of freedom of information requests and responses to those requests, and also maintaining a personal information directory. Then, I guess, moving to the, some of the bigger divisions that are not underneath the Secretary Treasurer's office but are maintained in the in the school board office. The next slide talks about the Employee Services Department. So that department is basically our human resources and payroll department, and it's a very large department, significantly because we have about eight thousand employees. So they're responsible for payroll and employee benefits, the recruitment and selection of all professional and support staff, the coordination and of staffing at schools and work sites, employee wellness and benefit, orientation or onboarding of new employees when they come on, when they get hired. Also responsible for labor relations, including grievance management and union contract negotiations. And of course, that's become more relevant, most recently relevant during COVID, also responsible for health, safety and support for for all employees. Next slide is our talks about the Learning and Information Technology Division. It's it's obviously the division that runs all the networking that we have in our system, not just in our building here, but also right through to all the schools out there. Their goal is to provide relevant technological solutions and encourage district and support staff, our school staff and our community of learners to reach their intellectual, social and aesthetic potential. And they hope to foster a culture of empowerment and engagement within a diverse and rapidly changing world. So this department is responsible for, you know, replacement of technology, training of people using that technology, all of the security that we have. And, you know, right now, there's a lot of security related to cloud computing. Also, our main systems of operations for our human resource management and our financial programming has is under the auspices of that department also. And the next slide talks about the Learning Services Department here at the school board office, which oversees arts education. It's basically responsible for programs and services that support the needs of all learners and from early learners right to K to twelve. They also support, provide support for parents and staff in the school district. So, you know, we have things like we allow the career programs, there's an early learning emphasis, English language learners. We have a lot of students. We have students. I think there's one hundred and forty different language dialects that exist in our student population. So we have a lot of, and we have new students coming all the time who require English language learning support. We also have French immersion and modern language programs, and obviously a big indigenous program, and a lot of supports for students to our support service, student support services. Like Sandra had said earlier, she did not prepare a slide for like main priorities going forward. But I did want to point out, just take another minute and just make make reference to some things that we are currently working on. We have just developed a new education plan. We had a, we had a strategic plan, but our new plan is called the Education Plan. And we're in the process of, we've identified the main themes in that plan and the goals and the objectives. But we are now trying to operationalize that plan, and we will do so over the next year or so. We are working, we are working to develop an anti-racism and non-discrimination plan. Most recently, the Ministry of Education took on the provincial responsibilities for childcare. So it's now called the Ministry of Education and Childcare. And obviously, we are going to be more heavily involved on the childcare front, even though right now, we do, we do provide a lot of opportunities for childcare throughout the City of Vancouver. But there's going to be a greater emphasis in that moving forward. And we're looking forward to that challenge. We're also working on a food framework for our students. We have a long range facilities plan that was approved in 2021. And we continue to work on planning studies related to that long range facilities plan and providing updates to our board. On the reconciliation and decolonization front, we take a lot of pride and a lot of pride in the work we're doing and a lot of a lot of, you know, belief that this is very, very important work. So we are working with the Three First Nations on protocol agreements. We have an Indigenous Education Council that meets with the education leaders in the in the Three First Nations. As Donnie mentioned earlier, they're doing a colonial law that we have a motion on our board docket to do the same thing. So, Donnie, I'm going to try to connect with you at some point, see what you're doing in regards to that. We take pride in opening all of our public meetings by saying that we are unlearning and relearning on the traditional territories of the Three First Nations. And if you also want to come to our school board office sometime in 2019, in the spirit of reconciliation, we have a reconciliation poll on our property facing Tenth Avenue, and also two welcoming figures that were put up in 2019 that were hand carved by our local First Nations artists. So back to you, Rosemary. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for the overview of Vancouver School Board. Now I'm going to spend a minute talking about the Vancouver Charter. You heard some references to that earlier in some of the presentations. Vancouver Charter has specific powers. These powers can only be changed by the province. It has, for example, greater authority in delegating zoning decisions and a more powerful border variance compared to the community charter. There's a unique section in the charter that gives, established the park board, as you heard that from Donnie earlier. And then some of the common rules with the Vancouver Charter and the community charter include voter and candidate eligibility, advance days, voting requirement, there's specific days, legislative days that we have to provide voting for, the length of the nomination period, the required advertising of election, for example, notice of election, the date and the location. Other rules include a specific term of the office elected official. Twenty eighteen was the first term that it was a four year term. The province changed that from three to four years in 2014. The charter also outlines the process for resignation from an elected position. Another example would be the requirement in council meeting, the requirement of a two thirds vote in approving grants and sale of land over four hundred thousand. So those are just some examples I wanted to provide to you from the Vancouver Charter. Next one is just around bylaws. I'm just going to cover some of the sections that's relevant to you now as a candidate and when you're elected. So the first one would be the election bylaw. And it gives the chief election officer the authority to set additional voting advance voting days, set the hours for special voting opportunities. Also around the eligibility requirements for special voting opportunities, for example, hospital with thirty beds. We include social service centers and shelters as part of that special voting opportunity. There's also rules around when vote by mail is available. The next one is the Code of Conduct bylaw, which is newly enacted by council. Specify the complaint procedure for council. It speaks to the role of the integrity commissioner in dealing with complaints. The other one that's relevant to candidates is the Street and Traffic bylaw, which has rules around when you can post election signs. So election signs are not permitted until forty five days prior to the general voting day. And they're only permitted on private property or designated area of the city. This information is available on our election website for your future reference. So I'm going to now focus a little bit about the the service group within city clerks, so the city manager is the service that the city clerks report to. So the city manager's office is hired by the elected official. The city manager provides advice to elected official and gives direction to staff. So staff in turn are responsible for implementing the decisions of council, and this is the same for park board as well. This is another slide showing the reporting structure. The Vancouver Library is, the funding to operate the library is approved by council. And the election of the board members is independent of council, is governed under the Library Act. Vancouver Police is funding, again, also approved by council. Election of the board members is also independent of council, and that is governed under the Police Act. Board of Parks and Recreation, funding to operate the park board is approved by council, and we run the election for the park board commissioner. So this is just another slide to summarize the high level of the city manager's responsibility. The city manager provides recommendations on hiring of statutory positions, and you've heard a couple of those. The Director of Planning is one of them. City Clerk is another, and my position, Chief Election Officer, is also another one. So now specifically the city clerk's office, which reports directly into the city manager's office. These are the function under this city clerk's office. I'll just touch on a couple of the areas. Specifically around, you know, council meeting management, we help prepare, we prepare agendas and publish the meeting minutes for council meetings and public hearings, signing up speakers for to speak at meetings. We also help citizens to get information about the city as well. The advisory committees that are appointed by council were responsible for the recruitment and providing administrative support. Our council is supported by an administrative, a group of administrative staff. And we also process all the correspondence that council receive, whether it's related to council meetings or public hearings or just general inquiries from the public. We have a division under, it's called the External Relations and Protocol, which coordinates the, any dignitary visits and organizes some council awards, honors or events and ceremonies. An example of that would be the Remembrance Day Celebration and Diwali Celebration. Our Access for Information manage group manages formal access to information requests and all aspects of the city's privacy and personal information protection obligation that's under the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act of B C in addition to any complaints. They also manage the city's corporate records and information management program. The last area I wanted to touch on is the Archives that requires a variety of records that document the city's history. They are the official repository for city records of permanent value. The Archives mandate is to acquire, preserve and make available these records and also private sector records of significant value to documentary heritage of the, to document the heritage of Vancouver. So the next slide is a bit more about the election office. So the election office is responsible for delivering the general local elections by elections and public sites. Our office distributes information to the public, including the voter's guide. Once that all the candidates are confirmed in September, the voter's guide will include candidates' biographies and the candidate's number on the ballot. Starting in July, we'll start advertising key dates in the local paper, and we'll also have this information on our election website. We hire over fifteen hundred workers just to work on the election day. Also keep in mind that the workers cannot be a candidate or a candidate representative or financial agent, and they also have to sign a declaration to this effect. So that is the end of the presentation. We will have some time for a question now. So before I start the question, if we don't get to your questions, do please email us at election@vancouver.ca. And I will, we will do our best to get the information to you. So let me get to the question. The first question would be for Donnie. Donnie, if you can unmute and share your video, enable your video. What do you do by decolonize? What does that look like?
Thank you for that question. So the park board, the origin of the park board was to oversee Stanley Park and essentially remove the indigenous communities who were living there. Stanley Park was their home. So we're rooted So we're rooted, like our existence is rooted in colonialism. So obviously along our journey, our systems have been very colonial. Our way at approaching land, our way at approaching relationships, our way of approaching services that we provide. So what we're doing is this colonial audit so that we actually can take a deeper look at the systems, especially the harmful ones that are rooted in colonialism. So that work is ongoing. We've had status updates from our team to our board. And really what we're going to do then is create a plan to decolonize. I can't tell you exactly what that's going to look like, but I can tell you that the audit will inform us.
Great. Thank you, Donnie. The next question is for David. Is there plans to do something with the school on Joyce and Kingsway? I believe that's Carlton Elementary School.
Can't seem to, you can hear me?
Yes, we can. We can see you. Can you enable video?
I said I can't connect to my camera apparently.
Okay, but we can hear you. Go ahead.
We are, we are considering plans for that Carlton school site. But I can't really tonight involve conversations that the board has had in private, in camera sessions. So sorry.
Great, great. Thank you. The third question is how much can council change priorities? There's a lot of work that is underway and how much can be changed midway through? Typically, if once council gives direction to staff, if work has already taken place, they can't change, they can't stop the work halfway. Sandra and Lon, I think both, Andrea, feel free to chime in. I think, not sure if there's any examples from your, from your area maybe you can speak to. But typically, once work has started, it's very difficult to, for them to change their mind. But there is a process. Do you want to speak to that?
Lon, would you like to go first and I'll go after you?
Sure. I can speak to some, some projects. So if we've led a contract already, if it's halfway built, it's possible that there would be a penalty or consequences for backing out of that project. It doesn't mean we can't do it. But it's, it's a pretty straight, the, I think it's important for candidates to know that the, all of us work from all the city policy that has been approved to date. And so if you want to make a change, you do have to look at the policy that's guiding us right now and look at how you would change that. And then, of course, then the new policy that is adopted by the new council would direct all of our work going forward. So it is, it is possible to make changes quite easily to work that hasn't started, you know, in a world of engineering, if it hasn't started construction, you know, it's an easy thing to change. Sandra?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would, I would agree. If there's, if there's already a contract in place, it's harder. We, most of our contracts do have, our service contracts anyway, if we're having a consultant do some work for us on a project. There are some clauses for, for early cancellation, for example. And, you know, but, and we do work at council, implementing council policies or long-range strategies. So just to clarify, I think when Lon says council policy, policy is a broad term that covers a variety of different ways that council gives staff direction. It could be a bylaw, it could be, it could be a strategy like the Housing Vancouver Strategy or the Healthy City Strategy. We typically refer to those as policy. So if the new council was, wanted us to focus on something else, then we would seek them to, direct us to stop working on or rescind a direction and give us new direction.
Thank you. Andrea, do you have anything to add? I'm not sure she's still on.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's been covered well by my colleagues. I think for, for us similarly, again, it's really about changing direction and what the impact is to whatever that policy is. So I think about liquor policy, which can be very controversial in the city. We work closely with PDS on liquor policy and licensing. So that's one where we have, over the years, continued to see different council direction on how we approach that policy. So yes, it is complicated, but certainly we can do that. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. I think the next question, it's probably relevant for all of you as well. What happens when council is divided on an issue? Does the city ever intervene when there's a stalemate? Staff's role, I'll let the GMs speak today, but is to provide advice and council will have to make the decision. And I'll turn it over to the GMs to answer that.
Yeah, I think, Rosemary, you summed it up. It's our job to, to do the research and engagement and to bring our best advice forward as staff working in this area. And ultimately, council will make a decision. And, and that will happen through the, through the council debate and through the vote. And, and so that's, and then we work at the direction of the whole of council. So it does take a direction through a vote of council to direct staff to, to, to do work or engage resources.
Yes, I could add, so as an individual counselor, you can't really tell us what to do, of course, because we could get 12 different or 11 different directions on what to do and they could be all in conflict. So we do need that direction to be by majority of council through a motion or through an approved recommendation. And once that's approved, again, that becomes our marching orders and we will implement it to our best of our, of our ability. And again, if you think about all the things that you might want to do, it's better to think about a whole category or a new method or a new evaluation framework as opposed to project by project. Because we do a lot of work, like hundreds and hundreds of projects a year. And so if you, if you think that we're taking the wrong approach to the way that we're implementing something, it's better to think about, you know, the plan or the strategy that we're using and changing that so that it affects all of our work in the same way.
Great. Thank you. The next question is for Donnie. Donnie, did you say that P and R generates 43% of its budget?
Forty-six percent is what I said. And I will say that different recreation, parks and recreation systems across the country have varying levels where they actually generate their, part of their budget. But this is on the higher side of what we generate through our services. So it's a very aggressive target.
Great. Thank you. Donnie, I have one more question for you. Do you and your team take directions from the park board, council or both?
Thank you for that question. We, like my counterparts in the city, we take direction from our board. And like our counterparts, we don't take direction from one commissioner. We take it from the entire board.
Great. Thank you. The next question is, to what extent can elected officials rely on staff with support and recommendations? Oh, sorry, I think we answered that question. Let's move on to the next one. Are staff loyal to specific elected officials? How do we know if they are not supporting one more than the other? GMs, can I turn to any one of you to answer that one for me?
Yes, the current council is always the right council. Whoever was effectively elected is directing our work. I've been at the city now for 25 years. That's been many different mayors and many different counselors. Everyone brings their own approach and, and a way that they want to see the city develop. Our job is to provide the best advice on how to make that happen, like how to achieve the outcome that you're after. And so we will give it our all, our best attention, our best work to make sure that you achieve those outcomes to the best, to the, to the kind of fullest that we can.
Any other GMs want to add to that?
I think Lon captured it nicely. And I'll say, I've worked in, you know, four different municipalities and it's the same in every municipality. The board or the council of the day is who you take your direction from and you're loyal to them.
And in the, in the 25 years that I've been here, you know, sometimes the changes in council are pretty big. And sometimes there's not much disagreement with a lot of the existing city policy that we're working under our plans. But sometimes they want to take a more focused or put, have us put more effort into a specific area and maybe less effort into another area. And so it's not a wholesale change that everything we're doing is wrong. It's more about where we want to place our attention.
Great. Thank you. The next question is for Teresa. I don't know if she's on there, but I think I might be able to answer this on her behalf. Broadway plan is being decided now. Is there still any opportunities to speak to it still at council? How lock in is the present suggestions on the Broadway plan? So the opportunity to speak to council has passed. The, you won't be able to sign, to speak, but you still have opportunity to submit your comments to council. That will be circulated with the, the number of speakers. I, at this time, they're still hearing from speakers. So I don't know if the decisions will be made today. I don't know how far along they are, we're hearing from all the speakers. But there's, there's always an opportunity to write into council to, to provide your comments. Hopefully that answered your question. And the next question is what sort of budget or supports do councils have to do committee engagement? So councils do have, I'll take that one for, you know, in addition, for their own specific interests, they do have a small budget that they could use for committee engagement. So it really depends on what it is. That's a very vague answer, I know, but we, we would need to know exactly what they're looking to do. They, they have a bylaw that outlines what those eligible activities could be and community engagement could be one of them. So it really depends what they wanted to do. So the next question, it says for, either for David or for myself. Am I correct? There is only one position available for school board or district? David, do you, do you want to take that? Do you understand that question?
Repeat the game, please.
Am I correct? There is only one position available for school board or district?
Oh, no. Thanks for the question. The school board has nine trustees. And not all. Yeah, it's nine trustees and some of the trustees may not be running again. So there, there might be an opportunity for more than one trust, one new trustee to be elected. But I don't think that, I don't think the trustees who are not running again have made their intentions public. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think the question is to do with how many positions. So there's nine positions. Yeah. If that's not the, if we didn't answer your question, please do let us know and we will do our best to respond to you. What is your plan to incorporate technology to improve citizen voice? So I think this one is, you know, we have, let's see, I'm going to attempt this one here. We would have, we respond, how we will respond to citizens will be our 311 services, Van Connect and also Shape Your City. And I think through maybe Lon, or yeah, maybe Lon would be something that you can expand on this for some of the community engagement. Are you still there, Lon? I think, is there other opportunities for them to, you know, how, what are the methods?
So for engaging in the public, so we do have Communication Engagements Department, which coordinates our activity across all the departments. However, each of the departments often do a lot of targeted engagement with very specific groups. And so that doesn't require a citywide approach. But so that we are coordinated when we're talking to the city as a whole. We, we, we make a strong effort to kind of do that at a corporate level.
Great. Thank you. The next question would be the last question. And I actually want all the GMs to have an opportunity to comment on this one. I think this is a great question. As a staff member, what makes a good elected official for you? How can we best support you if elected? And we thank you for that question. Who wants to start?
I could start. The one thing that, that I find for a lot of people, they see a problem, but they already have the solution in their mind. And so they want to tell us to do that, to do, to do this, because that'll fix this. As opposed to saying, I see a problem, can you tell me how we might fix it? And that's where you can use the expertise of our teams because we have a whole bunch of talent that is behind each of us as GMs with a lot of specialized expertise. And that, that, when we apply that to your, your question of how do we solve it? Or how do we get more of this? Or how do we do better at this? Then we come back with a whole bunch of recommendations that would achieve that. And so you could guess what those would be. But I would suggest it's better if you, if you ask what might be the best way of doing it first. And then you can pick and choose amongst the recommendations, the ones that actually appeal to you the most or the ones that feel the most right for, for you.
I'm happy to jump in too, if that's okay. I, Lon always is so eloquent and I totally agree with what he said. I would echo it by saying that the, the staff teams, there, there's a depth of knowledge, but there's also a depth of, I think it's just passion for what they do. Like you, you don't go in to work in municipal government to, you know, to, to become independently rich. You go there because you're drawn to a passion. You know, I know that some of the folks on my team say it's a calling. They feel compelled to do this work. So trust that they're bringing forward the options for the best decision-making. And you definitely push us, but, but understand that we have expertise and maybe get to know that expertise a little bit to understand what they're bringing to the table and, and give it the weight that it deserves. And I'll just add that sometimes folks who call in from the community may have, as Lon has mentioned, have the answer in mind already without seeing the broad possibilities of answers and not necessarily having done the extensive work that maybe the staff have done over a series of years. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll add to that how, what Lon said really, I think, reflects my thoughts as well around kind of focusing on the outcomes and then enable your, the staff, who are your staff, the council staff, to, to come forward with, with recommendations and options for your consideration. And, and also to Donnie's point that the, the staff are very knowledgeable and oftentimes very passionate about the work. And they're very, they very much want to counsel, presenting to council and having their ideas considered by council is, is very meaningful for them. So just would like to flag that. I guess the other thing I would add is help us prioritize. There is so much work that could be done. And, and yet there are limited resources and limited hours in the day for us to actually achieve work. And so what's, what I would ask for and what I do ask for from council is to help us prioritize. We can't do everything. So what is the most important? And then we'll focus on that and we'll do our best on that. But we can't be spread too thin because we just disappoint everyone, including yourselves, ourselves and the community. So that would be my request as well, is prioritize as early as possible in your term and then let us deliver for you.
Great. Thank you, Sandra. David, would you like to add to that, just to close off?
Yeah, I would agree with what the, what the general manager said. I mean, the, you know, we have a lot of expertise here on, on the school board staff and, and, you know, there's, we, we deal with, obviously we deal with, you know, 50,000 students. So there's a lot of passion related to parental concerns and, and those sorts of things related to the education of children. And, you know, we take that seriously. And we, you know, we make every effort every day to provide quality education and, and, you know, financial and facility report for our school, facility support for our schools. So I would just say the same thing. I mean, So I would just say the same thing, I mean, we, we have that expertise, and, and if you, um, you know, if you have a concern about something, a parent will reach out to you individually as a trustee if you're elected. Um, and make, um, but you know, we have a, we have a protocol here too about, um, you know, having concerns go to the superintendent's office, uh, and then be, be dealt with appropriately from that point. Um, uh, and that's how, that's how we, we can operate, we have, we have staff that, uh, listen to concerns, um. And, you know, they, they're qualified people who know how to deal with, um, you know, parental concerns when it comes to students, when it comes to other things like facilities planning and, um, school catchments and those sorts of things, we, again, we have that expertise, so um, as, as Lon said, it's, it's always better to ask a question about how would we solve this issue as opposed to, I'd like to do this. So thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Great, thank you, that concludes our session tonight. Thank you to our presenters, uh, for the very informative presentation. Uh, our closed captioners and registered A S L and interpreters, um, and those of you attending in person and online. We hope that the session was, um, informative for you. The recording of the session will be available, um, with transcript, transcript soon. Uh, when, when you exit this platform, you'll be directed to our feedback form, so please take a, a few minutes to complete that. Do register for our last candidate session, uh, session number four on June eighth, where we will focus on the nomination process and all the key dates leading up to the, the general voting day, uh, we'll have some tips for you as well. Thanks again, everyone, for joining us tonight, have a good evening.